Later on, okay?
Okay, we'll table that. No executive sessions held from last month. I will announce that there will be an executive session at the end of this meeting. This time, I'll move on to recognition of visitors. Rest of the code, Jim Christman.
Before, prior to this meeting, I would just like to bring before the board some sensitive issues that I have pertaining to information that I contain in this envelope and other information that might not really be available for a public meeting or actually appropriate, perhaps, for a public meeting. So I'm asking the board if there is any way that you could have an executive session with me involved with you guys away from these people before I present.
Do you have an entire program or a partial program beyond tonight on the floor or nothing?
Yes.
Or you've got to request for be part of executive session?
Well, the information that's contained in this envelope, I'd like to be able to present, but I don't really think that it should be out into public view at this point until I speak with you.
I will offer that the only thing that we can entertain a public hearing on is either going to be something contractual.
Executive session.
Executive session, yeah. It would be, have to be contractual, financial, land purchases of township, personnel, I don't know what else is out there. The list is kind of small and does it fall one of those categories?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
I'll ask my solicitor, Rich, do you have any objection that she be invited into an executive session to?
If the representation is being made by a citizen, that the citizen has information that is, that has to do with personnel, I'm assuming affiliated with the township?
Correct.
Then I think that's an appropriate subject matter for an executive session. And executive sessions are not necessarily limited in the sense that you can have people in who have pertinent information regarding those issues for which you can have an executive session. So if she's saying, I've got information having to do with personnel and township, then I think it's appropriate that it can be handled in an executive session and it is appropriate that, and it is appropriate for her to be part of that executive session.
I absolutely agree that this is one of those categories that you've mentioned, so.
You, one of the, I would caution, one of the things, not caution, but as a caveat, if during the course of the executive session, you feel as though the information goes beyond that, you can always at that point in time adjourn the executive session and bring it back to the public hearing. That's, that's a caution you folks can have with the assurance that during the course of the executive session, if you feel it goes beyond those things that are limited, then you can always adjourn and bring it back to the public.
Okay. Jim, you were on the agenda?
Yeah, sorry, I do have some issues, okay? First of all.
Because of what we, we have before, possibly because of the nature of what is intended with Mr. Christman, this information may need to be heard before we continue. Because I, this is all part of Mr. Christman's presentation to you guys. And I'd like to actually have you go into executive session prior to if we could.
Okay.
If that's a possibility.
Be patient, sit tight.
Okay, all right.
Helen, recognition of Mr. Visor signed in.
Roxanne?
No.
Happy birthday.
Bob? Linda?
Yeah.
Brenda Cummings? You wish to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
This is like the fifth letter that I've gotten about an RV or my property that the police came down and inspected and said someone was living in it. They need to come down and inspect it because there hasn't been anyone living in there or sleeping in there. My son slept in there, but he hasn't slept in there in over a year.
I, I spoke to you on the phone.
Yeah, you said Officer Carlson?
Yeah, Captain Carlson originally had went down there and looked at it and deemed that it was being occupied. There was power going to it, there were gas going to it, there were actually coffee cups in there that were, that were used. And, and I told you, we, we would be back down, but we don't come down as an appointment or anything. We, we come down.
There's no electric going to it.
Okay, then if you've disconnected the electric and everything.
The coffee cups up, we're in there, we're in there for, for a month.
All right, yeah.
I'd appreciate if someone come down and checked it. No, we've been in there for a month.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely do a re-inspect as we normally do. But we don't usually do it on, you know, appointment or anything.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sean? Kent Dur? Craig Nace?
Very quickly. Good evening, I don't have any, anything specific to report since the last meeting except that on June 2nd, the case went to trial at the Court of Common Pleas with our employee. That was a matter of comment or discussion last month. The first packet is the magistrate of District Judge, 41303, Judge McGuire's office docket sheet was turned over to the Court of Common Pleas and the final trial was on June 2nd. It's prosecuted by your, your police department with the district attorney. In the second packet, the Court of Common Pleas docket sheet, you'll find on page two, I highlighted for your information, all four charges were found not guilty. The jury deliberated, a jury of 12 deliberated for less than 45 minutes and the case is now over, closed and we're, we're relieved, we're happy, we, we expected that outcome and we're glad to see that was the case. So I want to provide these for the record. I know Captain Carlson had expressed some discontent with things in Patriot News specifically, so I didn't print out the Penn Live articles for you, but I want to bring the docket sheets as an official document of record. As always, if there's anything you need from us, please let us know.
Thank you.
Stanley? Mr. Binner?
Nothing.
Cece?
No, thank you.
Chris Deitch?
No, thank you.
Lamar Vraus?
Not this time.
Bob Johnson?
Not this time.
Chris Oberholzer?
I have one question, I've worked into, but it's not related to the, to that. Just kind of curious, what's involved in reducing a speed limit on a road? In particular, I was asking about Cove Road where it's 45 miles per hour between, right after, well, I guess from the turn on to Sawmill?
State or local?
No.
State or local?
Local.
It's a local rate.
You're saying right after it turns on to Sawmill?
I believe it's soon turn on to, I believe right after you pass Sawmill, coming from left 15, right to 25 or shortly right afterwards. So I was just kind of curious, what would need done to ask the township to reduce the speed limit on Cove Road?
To be enforceable under the vehicle code, we have to do a traffic and engineering study. And after the traffic and engineering study is done, it would, it would make a recommendation what this speed limit should be. And we'd have to propose an ordinance, have, and pass the ordinance. It would set forth a speed limit and the posting of signs as contained in the vehicle code.
Is it just, I, I don't, I feel like that speed limit's too high for the road, there's no shoulders, so a lot of shopping corners around the bank, going up the hill there from the nursing home.
Oh, we had something to that. In years gone by, we had that same similar complaint. So we put some signs up there to slow up a little bit, we put some tractor signs there for the farmers, et cetera, going back through there. That gentleman and I rode that same road years ago when everybody was complaining about it and went over that for the purpose of a traffic study. And we weren't sure there was worth the effort at the time that the most that you could reduce it was probably 5 mile an hour. And so the traffic study never continued beyond that, spend, spend, spend any more money on that. So as to, the only problem I have with that, if there never has been a road study on that, we'll have to take a look at what we have in the records, then that road automatically is 55 mile an hour regardless. Am I not correct, Max?
I believe so.
Yes, sir. So it would be 55 even though the township in the past, in years gone by, posted signs everywhere. You can post a sign, doesn't mean it's legal. If, if there's never been a study on it, am I not correct, Max, Rich?
Well, my only hesitation is that until the vehicle code was amended to require traffic and engineering studies, if it was posted prior to that, then I think you're going to find that it, it's, as we commonly say, grandfathered in.
Okay.
From the, from the adoption of the motor vehicle code forward, if there's to be a change, it has to be done through a traffic and engineering study.
Wasn't that in the early to mid 70s? Was it a state road at that point?
I want to say 1972.
Yeah, I was thinking 73.
It was a state road at that time, actually. I'm going to turn back.
Yeah, I don't know when the signs went off.
So it would be grandfathered to that?
Well, we have to check that out.
Game of the corner right now.
And this gentleman's question, if you have to do, I don't know what a traffic and engineering study costs these days.
Well, we can, we can do that.
They, they can do that yourselves with the unit that they have.
Oh, you guys can do that?
Yes.
Now, I'm not really saying there's people exceeding speed limit. I, I don't live right on Cove Road, I live right back, trail right off of it. It's just 35 is too, too fast for that reason. So you come, you come up past Kinkora on the bends and then it's what, a quarter mile? And then it slows you back down for another bend and so I, I think even putting it at 35, people would, even if they were going to go a little faster, they're thinking about, well, it's only 35 for you. Because I have seen people, lives are there in the mornings and whatnot, and it's a small stretch. So there's really. Kids wait for school bus. Yeah, and, and that's right, I mean, our kids, the school bus stops right on Cove Road, which, and that's, I guess that's an issue for the school because I don't agree with that stop location. Because it's turned out, well, trail is one way, you can't turn on Cove Road from there. But the school bus stops right there.
Well, we'll take a look at it. I assure you that in the past, I can remember when the schoolhouse from T-room up through was paved for the first time while I worked on that. They come along the township, put reduced speed signs up, dropped them down to 30 or 35, I can't remember which, and the people complained and someone took it somewhere. Next thing, we had the state in there and they done a speed study and said it must be 40 mile an hour. We didn't have no choice. So you can't, be aware, you can't drop them to something below that it's an unreasonable amount unless it's in what, a heavy populated area and automatically what, 15 or 20 max? I forget what that is.
Well, you can get 25.
25, yeah. So we'll take a look at it for you.
He said 35 is good, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll take, we'll take a look at it.
What's that?
But we have to do a study.
You have to do a study.
We determine that it's an urban area, okay? Maybe down to 35.
That's not an urban area.
No, no, I don't have to look at the map for that one.
Thanks for your concern. Take a look at it.
Ms. Cusack?
Hello, gentlemen. I'm here to ask for consideration on demolition of the house. I would like to put it to you that I would have it down in a month. I have a petition, but I heard that that doesn't really matter. I also have a doctor's excuse for being down for long. That's, that's basically what I'm here for. I need a permit to do it.
I guess as long as this process is drawn out and as many times, I guess, from what I understand, we went through the proper procedure, notification, et cetera, now we got a lot of money invested in demoing this building down. And motion was made to proceed with that. It was held up from time being to see if there was any liens or anything against it from a bank that would make the value of us tearing it down beyond what it was worth. And it turns out that there isn't that. So at the present time, the matter is before the board tonight, they decide to either issue the contract to do it or, or whatever the board wishes in, in regard to that, to change that. And I'm not sure what Solicitor Wagner is going to advise us to do with that. Somewhere along the line, there's cost involved, it's going to have to be settled for with the township. We've got men, labor and material down there to clean up and an awful lot of people in the past that wanted that cleaned up and we've done nothing, they said, but it had to go through its proper process and it did through a long period of time. So, Rich?
Thanks. Let me ask some questions, right? Because I'm, I'm familiar with the process, but I'm not familiar specifically with what's going on. When you say there's been lots of costs associated with people at the property, has the township begun to do something or is that the anticipated cost that would have been incurred?
The township started the process after we got to the point that nobody responded, am I not right there?
That's correct.
Though everything was done in the proper paperwork, no response and whatnot, the motion was made by the floor with people sitting out here wanting to know why we're not doing anything. And of course, we had no response back from this lady or anybody else. I guess no response to the DJs or nobody and, and through all the paperwork. Am I not correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. And so we had no response. And so it's considered abandoned, there was a sign posted, they had, they had proper people in there to take a look at it and said.
Rich is talking about expense of it.
Yeah, expense, okay.
We had, we had, our road crew went down there and actually did some.
How much do we, what are we talking about?
I don't know what, what they.
Okay, we had, we had three days down there with our.
There was a gentleman back there who seems to believe he may have some input that would help us.
Hey, I'm here with Karen Tyne's check. The thing she's trying to say is that we understand that Joe would do a lot of things down with the property. Karen was in an accident in January on her from Delville that took her to the hospital where her spleen was messed up. She wasn't able to do anything and her son was going through some type of thing that her son was doing work on the property. Him and Mike Schaefer took down two floors of the burnt down house already and hauled the wood off to Mike Fresh, you know? Then the process stopped because she was down and out and her son had some legal problems that was going on with his family. But all that's, all that's come to pass, you know? And we talked to people in Perdix, you know, whether petition is, is irrelevant of anything, but there's people in, in the township that signed, that state that they will come out, you know, what's the people's name? Heisley, somewhere. People said they're, they're coming out, they'll help. And if they give us 30 days' extension, that they'll come and help and tear it all down and get done what we need to done with the 30 days.
How much do we put out, do we know?
What's that?
Are we talking about $300, $400?
How we got dumpster out here yet?
Rich, plus dumpster, the two workers and the pickup. $5.50.
What's that?
$5.50.
13.
I realize I'm already charged that part of the bill.
Are you talking $1,500 bucks? Less than that?
I'd say probably a little less than that.
But there is currently liens on the property, not from a bank, but from the municipal authority, which is roughly about 5,500 separate ballpark.
There are already a lien on the property.
I'm aware of that.
You're going to have to deal with and, and, and get the septic tank filled in, which is never done, I understand, with the lid on it. That would never follow up.
Yes, you're right.
And I don't know where we get the guarantee that it's going to happen other than your work.
So sign some, sign some type of contract, draw some contract up, give her 30 days, you know, with that signature on it, you can go from there. But are they not going to have to produce proper disposal?
Yeah.
To satisfy DEP?
Correct.
So there's multiple, there's multiple permits that are going to have to be obtained and approval that you're disposing of the stuff in a safe manner, not only tearing it down because there's asbestos concerns to the age of the home?
There's nothing left but wood.
No, there's nothing left.
Okay, well, is there any piping left in the house?
No. I don't believe, I don't believe there's, they had PVC pipe, they mailed it.
Well, but the thing about it is, is that DEP regulations are is that you're going to have to have proper disposal, you have to have a plan of how it's going to be properly disposed of because of potential contenders, is that correct?
Construction debris.
Yeah, a lot of it's already been recycled. Anything that was worth recycling, 10 metal steel, whatever.
What's that?
14,000.
Yeah, 14,000 in tax books.
And they already owe about five or six to the municipality.
That's correct.
So if we clean, if we clean it up, it's going to cost how much to clean up?
What was that bid, Helen, 50?
Uh, 50.
56.
Not right here.
That thing that somebody bought, it's worth a thousand dollars to them.
65.
What?
65.
65.
65.
Hate me for it, they're under the gun, 30 days to get it done, ain't going to cause a problem one way or another. It just lessens the amount we have to end up spending is what it really does. And if they don't do it within 30 days, no second chances. That's my suggestion. Come back here at the end of July, next meeting, if they haven't substantially completed the demolition, at that point in time, you can move forward. You really haven't, you haven't lost anything, you're still in the same situation, the only difference is you may have saved some cleanup money to the extent that they get it cleaned up.
Payment for our, our fees, Rich, or is that going to go towards a lien?
Well, that.
We got a dumpster sitting out here that we don't know what's going to cost until we haul it away?
We, that's one of the questions that, that these folks are going to have to decide. Does the demolition include reimbursing the township what they're out? Because if we do it, you're going to be about $6,500. Right now, it's less than 1,500.
There it is.
You understand what I'm saying?
Right, right now, right now, just so you're clear.
Yes.
So you can make the informed decision. Just so you can make the informed decision. The title search against the property shows that you got about $5,500 in judgments against Joe. We have another, something less than 1,500 that we've put into the cleanup so far. So now you're basically $7,000. Property's worth 14. If we give you the opportunity to clean it up, and you do, fine and ending. If we give you the opportunity to clean it up and you don't, when we clean it up, it's going to be yet another $5,000 to $6,000 to clean it up, which means whatever value might be left over after sheriff's sale, there's going to be anything, there's not going to be any value. So it kind of puts you under the gun if you want to make this commitment to do that so you understand completely what, what it means.
So that means if we reimburse the township for the dumpster and everything, we still get to fill it up?
You can, I mean, you can still, I mean, you want to clean up, you're saving yourself five or six grand by going to dump it.
You're asking something about the dumpster, sir?
Yeah, he's talking about the dumpster, we're going to reimburse him for it, that he already put stuff in it. I'm saying whatever needs to be, you know, trashed. What are you paying for that by the ton?
Yeah, you pay for it by the ton.
That's sitting out here, that's dropped off so much for a drop and whatever's in it, when they take it unloaded, you pay for it by the ton for construction debris.
Well, I, I was under the impression that that was already going to be a lien.
Well, now you're asking us not to do that.
Is that what, what I'm doing?
What was one of your liens?
Somewhere along the line, I'd like to recover at least the effort that we took out of our general fund for this year to do this. And, and it's either going to be a lien against the property, the way of Solicitor Wagner, I think, is I understand it, Rich, it's either going to be a lien or else you make settlement with us by, for, for, you make settlement with the municipal authority, get everything cleaned up, there'd be no lien and you get, we'll give, grant you 30 days to take it down.
Okay, so what exactly?
You make an agreement, get it done in 30 days and there'd be no lien against you.
The only thing you would owe would be what we've expended so far, which is something short of $1,500. If you don't do it and we have the contract to do it, you're going to owe about $6,500.
Right.
So this is about a $5,000 issue to you. And if you clean it up, you save about five grand.
It's more than that, but okay.
Okay, well, from our perspective, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And we'd need to make it clear that the liens by the municipal authority, we have no, we have no.
Oh, absolutely, no, no, we can't control them. You have, you have liens against you right now. We can't control those. This is not forgiving what is on the record. If you, if you get it cleaned up and you come back here in 30 days and it's substantially cleaned up, we're not going to award a contract, any, any demolition people to clean it up, but we're going to look to get that reimbursement of something on the 1,500.
Right, and I realize that.
And we're going to look for the.
And if you don't have it, we're going to ask, they put a lien on the property for that amount.
Okay.
I see what you're saying.
See what I'm saying?
Yes.
Understand that?
Yes.
That's good.
You, I'm going to ask a question, I'm, please, please, I want to be very, I'm sympathetic to your situation. Are you in any kind of medication right now that would, it prevent you from making an informed decision here with us?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm sorry to have to ask that, but I, I wanted to avoid that issue, that's fine. If, if they're willing to do that, it's up to the board, you know, I have no problem with it.
One other question, Rich, one thing I have a big concern on down there and, and the water runs in it and comes back out and the neighbors complain while I was down there. We got a septic tank down there, according to the municipal authority, when they hooked on the sewage down there, they were all swept out, the lids taken off of them and filled. That still remains, to the best of my knowledge, never taken care of. We have no record here in the township and no record by any for our inspections down there when that was done. That is something that needs for the safety of people or anybody down there, those lids come off and those tanks be filled.
Okay. Okay, now, I did start to put boulders in the one.
Why don't you contact our sewage enforcement officer to help monitor what needs to be done?
No, not Sam. That's going to have to go through.
He meant Lenny.
Yeah, that's right, Lenny, yeah.
Lenny Sizer.
He meant Sam.
To talk, talk with him, let him monitor, make sure what you do with the septic systems is okay with him. And then hopefully.
Got number four?
Okay. And they've already pulled the grinder pump out. Grinder pump's down over there.
Good luck with it.
Yeah, thanks.
The grinder pump's not there?
Yeah, they took it out. It's not there.
Why?
No, they, they pulled the grinder pump, you'll have to go to the municipal authority to see why they pulled the grinder pump, it's sitting there unused and et cetera, so for whatever reason, that's a municipal authority issue that they pulled that grinder pump out of. The housing's there. You pull the grinder pump out and, and probably satisfy the municipal authority, maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, they'll put the grinder pump back in there so you have the use of sewage facilities in the future when you rebuild.
And just for FYI, the municipal authority is normally scheduled the first Wednesday, but they have moved it to the 9th, is that correct, Cece?
July.
The 9th of July?
I know the date's changed.
If I could have a word down, please?
Yes, the 9th at 7:00.
The 9th at 7:00 here in this room, here.
Okay.
So those issues you'll have to address the municipal authority, referencing to the tank and the grinder pump. And the liens. And the liens that they have against the property.
Oh, I see.
That's the zoning office.
Who can get that, um, the demo permit? Give us 30 days to get it.
You can come in and get it tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
A question, the demo permit. Originally, we waived it, are we doing that again or not? I'm asking.
Yeah.
Thank you. We've waited once, tell them.
Yes.
Never responded to.
Yeah.
So before the board, what is the wish of the board? On hearing, no requests?
I move that we give them 30 days to complete the demolition of the structure and have And have the septic tank pumped, if it's not already pumped, and then filled. You can't fill if it's already full sewage. And also to place a lien against the property for the recovery of the money that the township has already spent approximately fifteen hundred dollars.
And we don't know what the dumpster's gonna cost. And what, what, if, if we're gonna do that, then I also include in that motion that we call, what you call, uh, call Sylvester tomorrow to unload the dumpster, so we know what that cost is gonna be. We don't know what that cost is gonna be, 'cause that's per ton. Okay?
I'm thinking that, you know, we really didn't have too much on the property once it burned down, just some stuff in the shed, so I'm pretty sure you can't have too many tons in there.
Well, the dumpster's pretty much full of stuff that we brought up out there, tremendous amount of stuff.
We lost everything in the fire, everything burnt down, I'm trying to figure out, what was it? We got some donation stuff that we put in the shed that was cleaned out. That, that was about it.
Let me know.
Okay. I know the dumpster has a lot of material, when they haul it up, they work two days, hold it constantly. There's still a tremendous amount of debris down there. There's, there's fifty-five gallon drums, I'm gonna move on, fifty-five gallon drums of broken glass down there, you can't even pick up or move, we've taken them away. Sitting there. So, at that, Brian made the motion.
I second the motion.
Motion made for the second, all those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it.
Did we state a date, there were, when they, once they are paying-
Thirty days from tonight?
Or tomorrow?
Thirty days from tomorrow, that's for-
Okay.
Well, knowing that they have, we know that they have two weeks before they meet the municipal authority, or that's not our concern.
No, I, I, my thought is if they come back, if they're, if they're back here at the next meeting, they substantially have it taken care of.
Okay.
That's five thousand dollars, we don't have to worry about spending it. It's a lot for them.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
So you're Daryl Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Paul Smith? I think you just said, yeah. Mr. Smith?
Yeah.
You have anything?
Yeah, it's been brought to my attention that you're looking for input on placement of the Appalachian Trail community sign.
Yes.
Do you have a specific question, or?
Well, I've placed it down here where there's an awful lot of other signs, right down to bottom of Hilldale Legion, where the Appalachian Trail comes up through there, so that all the trail hikers could see it, and so the traffic in every direction can see that Appalachian Trail sign. Seems Penn Dot, for some reason, doesn't like it there.
Well, for starters, I had given the Duncan and Borough four signs, with the idea that they would put them where they thought was good placement. They decided to put it at the north and south end of High Street, back to back. So I took the fifth sign that I had and gave it to Penn Township, again, with your choice of placement. And unfortunately, the overpass is not only Penn Dot property, but it's also within Duncan and Borough limits, so it's just not a, an ideal place, even though it's a high visibility spot, it's-
I guess what concerns me is why the Appalachian Trail sign, when there's advertisements all with their kind sign there and they're okay?
They're not okay with that, they can remove them at any time.
But they didn't?
No, but that, that's, no one has permission to sign there, to my knowledge, the way they explained it to me.
So, I feel that by letting the other ones-
Not to mention the weeds are DAI.
Yeah. That's my question, is why the rest of them weren't removed and that one was singled out, and, and was it Penn Dot?
Well, I'm the one who removed it, when I was notified that that was, because I'd already been in contact with Penn Dot, trying to get that sign up.
Penn Dot notified you?
That's right, and I had been in contact with them, so they already, they already knew my contact information, because I had tried to hang that sign on various places that were Penn Dot right of ways, and when I couldn't win that battle, that's when I went to the Borough and had them hang it up on their right of ways, which will be the same situation for yourselves, Penn Township can hang it up in your right of ways, therefore, it's your property, it's your sign, and Penn Dot won't have a say on it, because it's, it's your right of way. So, you know, two seventy-four would not be a, a good idea, because my knowledge, that'd be Penn Dot's right of way.
I know another gentleman not too long ago put a sign up, just because it was visible from Penn Dot. They made him take it down because they didn't like it. Is that gonna be another case, is this had to be hit, it's not visible from Penn Dot?
Well, I mean, I can't answer all those questions.
Well, that's a fact.
But, uh, I mean-
They made him take it down.
If you want my opinion, I, I'd like to see it at the entrance to the business, Montevol's business area, I think it'd be a great location, just because it's a high traffic area, not only for the community, but also for Appalachian Trail hikers, so.
Stanley, he'd like to have that up at your place, going in the business campus way, sitting up at the bank at the exit, going in there, would you like to see that sign there?
I don't know what you're talking about.
No, it's an Appalachian Trail sign that we put up to say this is an Appalachian Trail community, he'd like to see it up there.
It's a street sign, it's a street sign, just like, speed limit sign, that's how it's-
Yeah, a street sign, so what you have is, is curb and everything else out along there. If you wish to have it in there, Stanley, I'll give it to you and let you install it, you say be a big favor and let it-
I'd say, sir.
I'll be glad to give it to you, Stanley. Because-
If he knows, if he knows how to take them out, I'm sure he knows how to put one in.
Yeah.
I have the issue, if you wanna bring it up, we'll look at it.
I mean, yeah, but this is still a Penn Township thing that not only-
Not our right of way. Wouldn't be our right of way there.
Well, that's, that's kinda what I'm going for, is to have it in your right of way.
Well, it could be viewed from there, could be viewed from the right of way, yes.
Meaning, you hang it, you know, on your street post type of deal?
Well, I'm waiting a minute.
I mean, it is a street sign, it's a street sign that goes on a street post, preferably not three feet off the ground, but more like a normal six, seven feet off the ground, like every other sign would be, this business campus, right of ship.
Yeah, business way campus is township right of way back there.
It's our gift to you, we're hoping you would accept it with open arms.
I think it'd look nice right on top of the bank there, just where you turn in Stanley's in there, on the right-hand side up in the bank. No, not going in, that's business campus way, going in Stanley's.
Back on the business campus way, that's, that's yours.
Which bank you talking about, going back to the campus?
Immediately when you make the first turnoff into Stanley's, if the ground raises up, there's a buffer there, is there not, Stanley? Yes, out across there. You can take that sign and put it in the ground there, right up against the bank, right in there, everybody can see it coming in, everybody going to your place can see it, it's right there where, where, where it's visible.
Who, who owns the traffic light, is that number Penn, Penn Dot?
Yeah.
Would that sign interfere with the visibility of the other sign saying it's a traffic light that Penn Dot would have in it?
It's a big sign there, your sign.
I was gonna say, I have a fuel sign there.
Yeah.
You're there, too.
They have it.
You're there, too.
I'm not doing it down there. Penn Dot, they want it down there, why would they want it up here on their right of way? Exactly the same issue that we've went through with signs down here.
And it'd be visible.
We put them up and had to tear them down for a person, he bought and paid for them, we installed them. Penn Dot come and made us take them down.
With, with your experience and your best judgment, I, I, I'm, again, I'm putting it in Penn Township's hands, hoping that you can find an appropriate place for it. And, uh, I just, I just don't wanna see it disappear into the wrong hands, which in this case would've been Penn Dot, they could've trashed it, so, you know. There's money invested in it, I don't wanna see it go in the trash.
Is this the sign that was donated last fall?
Yeah.
The one's over in the office.
Oh, so, no.
So, I, I put it up down there, I decided the rest of them, thought it'd be no trouble. And it made exposure that everybody got to see it. Just like every other sign, still sitting in there, is exposed.
I mean, like I said, that would've been my first choice, but I got shut down on, on Penn Dot's end of the, end of the deal.
There's gonna be a parking lot put in down here, coming down off the trail, by the Appalachian-
If it's not something Penn Township's interested in, I'm sure I can find, uh-
I'm not saying that we're not interested in, I'm making, I'm making a suggestion where to put it, I'm not gonna get argumental about it.
No, I'm just saying-
If you want me to put it up there, we'll put it up there. There's not much place to put it along the road, the snow plows, don't take them down, coming in there, plowing right up against the curb and whatnot, you're gonna get off the edge, you're gonna be off our right of way. And I'm not gonna go up there and pound it down into concrete or in a curb.
Yeah, it, it-
Take a look at the width of the road, how much right of way we have.
On a street post. Like a speed limit sign.
But does it have, does it have to be in the sidewalk and on the curb, can it not be behind the sidewalk? Still visible?
Very visible.
I don't know why I'm being asked these questions, I'm really confused.
Well, you seem to have the objection to having it sitting behind the sidewalk, so that was my question.
I have no objection, I just don't wanna see it in the garbage, is all I said.
Well, then, he's fine with it.
Stanley, you don't have any problems, Stanley, I'll be able to put it up for you, how's that? Thank you. End of problem.
Need any help with that?
Henry.
Dex.
Somebody asked you if we need-
Are you gonna need any help on our end, or you, that's something that your maintenance men will do, or?
Yeah, we'll sign your bill, leave your address.
Actually, I have my address.
Okay, we'll put it up for you, how's that?
Thank you, appreciate that.
No others.
Okay.
Looks like I forgot somebody.
Who didn't sign in or anything? Nope?
Yes.
Yep? That's it, Henry.
Okay. Okay, invoices, expenditures before you, for approval. We have the invoices before you. What is the wish of the board, is there anything to offer, special, Libby?
Other than the normal bills? We had a charge to install guide rail in the products area. And then also, we had to make the last installment for our workers' confidence insurance.
Okay.
Those are payments other than monthly bills.
Okay, do I hear a motion to pay the, I move we pay the bills. Okay, motion made, do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made, the second, all those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order. Okay? Invoices, expenditures, treasurers report. Before you, for objection or repoo, approval, or approval. Libby, anything special, I see we have a note there?
Um, there, we received a payment from Penn Dot for state police fines or allocation, is that just once a year, Helen? Twice, twice a year. And we also received a payment from capital tax for the earned income tax.
Okay.
How much can we get them to say, please?
One thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Okay, I move that the treasurer report the approved subject audit.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made, the second, all those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. You have before us a parking record CD.
Yes. Uh, the CD matures in July. And Karen Tulkins has requested that they turn it over to another six month CD. Um, and the rates are listed on the sheet I gave you. Six months is point two percent. That's the best rate at Marysville.
Okay. Karen, what, what for date you want? Eighteen months, twelve months, six months?
Six.
Do I hear? She wants for eighteen?
Six.
Six.
It's a lazy industry.
Okay, what's the wish of the board?
I move we reinvest the maturing CD at Marysville Bank for six months.
Okay. Motion made, I'll second. All those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order. Minutes, May twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, before you, for approval or rejection, or for the offering of any changes on it.
With no changes, we remain, I make the motion that we accept and approve the minutes to be published.
Hang on, second, all those in favor, give their consent of saying aye. Ayes have it, so order. We have before you at this time, the highway report. Uh, traffic signalized belt plans are before us, Helen, let's deal with that first.
Okay, um, it's under Max's report, too, but we receive-
Okay, well, you wanna leave it to Max?
Either way, I don't care.
Okay, I'll leave it to Max then, I'll say.
Okay.
Okay. When you wanna address it now, Max?
We can.
Go ahead, do it.
Yeah, we, we took a, we took a look at the, they gave us a set of patents highlighting all the minor old changes that were made. Again, we found nothing that had actually changed, except for, they had field changes on the detection equipment, they moved that around, and that is what's been highlighted, in essence, is the main items on there, so there's really no change to it. I have no reason to say you shouldn't accept it.
Okay.
I got a question on that.
Yes.
You're talking about the traffic light at Montvolk, right?
Yes.
The last time I was in there, did somebody go out and check that out, or what happened? I'm just asking.
Yes, the, we, last month, we reported, I met up there myself with them up there, that they, a lot of people are under the impression of going up, that the left-hand turn arrow doesn't work, or coming down. But if the traffic's moving and there's nobody in that left-hand lane there for a long period of time, you can run traffic by there, everybody can turn in and out without that light ever coming on.
I don't know nothing about that, but was there something going on before that? 'Cause I drive school bus, I come down through there already, and I come up there, I'm trying to think how it was, it was green, and I get up there, and by the time that's green, I'm going through there, it changes, is there some kinda height thing that they, they set something up there, or what? Did it set up for cars, or trucks, or what?
No, it settled a timer.
But if, if you're coming down there, here's the road, and the, you know, the traffic light's up here, so is, is it pointed, you go down the road, is it for cars, trucks, or both, or how?
I think, well, he's looking at the preemption things, probably, that's up there, we're not, Greg, on top.
That shouldn't be affected.
That shouldn't be affected, that should don't affect the light.
It wasn't working right, I, I don't know if it changed or not, at that time, but that's, here and there, that's been a while, that's like, a quarter, four weeks.
Well, it was, was working right, and, and I spent a couple hours up there with those people that day.
It didn't change it, but it wasn't working right, that's all I know.
And that may be, but that was, that was looked into, and was working properly according to the design of it. You have any more complaints about Stanley? I mean, I, at the present time, I, I look at it more closely now, and haven't seen anything wrong with it. Yeah, yeah, I, I haven't heard it.
We had a good, good night, friends, again.
Yeah, it seems to be okay now.
Did they, and did they move the eastbound, or, uh, preemption sensor? Was that already done? I knew they were going to-
They were, they were working on that, that very day, Greg, yeah, yeah, they were supposed to move it, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Max. Creek roads, we got it mowed, we got it repaired before the detour came into place. I also had a good opportunity to look at some areas out there, they're so hard to keep and repair. Uh, the road crew and I went out there and took a look, there are several places that we are gonna have to take the time and expense to put an underdrain in there, because you can blow the water off of the blower, and watch it come right up through the cracks of the shale in there, just like a spring. And the one that's in front of Jesse Boyer's place down over the bank, there's a pothole about that big around, constantly comes out, it freezes, pushes out every year, if you go out there and blow it out, you can watch it fill up with water. So as long as that water, that spring's underneath there, and it gets cold, when the water table's down, you don't have that. But that, the right-hand turn there on the left-hand side coming into town, we will have to do something with that, that was ongoing, that road broke up shortly after they paved it originally with a brand new. The water comes up through the, can't, can't do nothing about it. And, uh, so we'll have to cut that out, put a, put an underdrain out, it's gonna be, uh, labor intensive, but we can get it done, we've done it other places. So we got the roads done, uh, in, in advance for, for that. Uh, we've got the mowing on the roads north of the mountain, that through here, we've gone around them one time, we started mowing in the cove, and, uh, among other things, uh, it wasn't a continuous mowing down there, we got on and off of it, but we hope to be back on here Friday, we have some other work to do. Culvert Drainage and Schoolhouse, uh, we started at one end of that and cleaned that mucky mess out down there, and I see it just makes a good collector pit down there for people to throw their trash in, just as quick as they can throw it in. No sooner clean it out, cleaned all that up, and there's debris, people just gotta throw their stuff in there, and they come up, throw it in there. There is a section of it from the edge of, prior to getting down to CC's, that we got rained out, chased out, couldn't get in there, haven't got back to that, but we will be back there to finish that, and on down, clear on down to the end. Uh, but we hauled a tremendous amount of muck and leaves out of there, uh, that hadn't been done for a long time. Water is now flowing and draining properly, and we don't have that buildup in there. Gonna help the road a tremendous amount. Guardrails of King Cor, we cleared them from the top to the bottom with the brush and weed whacker, and we have found that extensive, two, three times a year. We have now decided that we're gonna take those areas once they're mowed down, we're gonna touch them lightly with either crossbow, or a herbicide out here that's legal to buy without permit out here that we can use. We've started that, it's intensive, we need to keep the Schumak down, the Schumak grows up so quick. So, whether we like it or not, I'm not much for spraying, but we'll save the township a lot of, a lot of labor in regards to that. And we've, we've already done all the weed whacking, and we've sprayed around the guardrails out at Hawes, out of Fritz, and out of Eversole around there to keep the, to keep the grass down, yes.
Since we all have wells out there, is that herbicide safe?
What's that?
Is that herbicide safe, since we all have wells out in that area?
Sure is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's nothing that, it's nothing that isn't being sprayed on the fields right behind your house. Okay? Maybe not as bad? Okay? So, uh, otherwise, I won't be putting it on. It's non-permitted, so you know that it's, it's nothing out there that, that's required by permit to put on. We're not putting any more on, and we have to, to get the job done. So, matter of fact, we cut the application in half to see where we're at. If it's effective, some of it is, well, we- If it's effective, some of it is, well, it'll be, it'll be worth it. So, we've, we've got them taken. By next month, I, we're getting at the point where I keep watching my budget, see where we're at on the road crew, feel comfortable enough now to take the footage that we need out here, and make contact with the people for line painting. I need line painting on faculty, and I have butcher shop out there and some other areas. I'll put that footage in and get a price for next month to bring back here for approval, hopefully get our line painting done this year. Hemlock removal. I went to the borough, explained to them down there, they had a considerable amount of it down here where the Appalachian Trail sign was. Got the workmen down there, surprised thanks to the record, and got pretty good article on that in regards to that poisoned hemlock down there. We have a truck full of it out in the garage at the present time drying. Where we did, but just for everybody's information, where we took it out last year and cut it, there's not near the amount of it back this year. The municipal authority right away, the whole way up the stream up here was loaded with it last year, we cut it out, small amount of it there this year. None down Valley Street. The entrance to Schoolhouse, as soon as I can get a hold of the guy at the, I stopped there a couple times, can't seem to get anybody. Tremendous amount of it there on the entrance to Schoolhouse in there at the antique bar. Huge patch-up. I gladly remove it, I'm trying to eradicate it out of the, out of, out of the cove. I need to talk to Mr. Morrison, going up over his head along, I think it's his ground, there's quite a bit of it in there, but we don't go on anybody's private property about it, and I've notified some of the farmers, whatnot. I am going down to the school, walk through their wetlands down there, I mentioned that, to see that there might be some in there. The stuff's prolific, it grows leaps and bounds. So, we've, we've removed as much of it as we possibly can, we see it, we're taking it out of, out of service, real quick. And where some of it out here that isn't blossoming, we now know what it looks like in its youth, and we're spraying it, yes?
I didn't tell you it was almost right along the road, right alongside us, there at Ten Ring Way. There's tons of it down through there, tons of it, but heard a lot of it.
Of poison hemlock?
Oh, yeah.
Where?
Right next to me there, Ten Ring Way.
You got poison ivy, but you don't have poison hemlock in there.
Oh, hemlock, I thought you said poisoned Schumac. Well, I'm-
No, poison hemlock.
Oh, I don't know what that is.
This, this is, this is, this is a bad weed here, there's no part of it that isn't, isn't, isn't-
They trip it out here.
Yeah. So, and I got the okay from the borough down there, and we went down there in ten, fifteen minutes. We removed that down there. Cut it out of there, got it out of there. I see it on the state right away, anywhere in Penn Township, I haven't heard from the state yet, that I'm doing something wrong, but we're cutting it, removing it wherever we can. CC, someone thinks that there might be a couple stalks along your place, I haven't got down there to see if there is.
There are.
Huh?
There are.
I will be down to get them, okay?
They're all yours.
We, we've got a method to handle it, so the guys aren't exposed to it. Our water flow's starting to subside out here in some of our ditches, we got some culverts that we'd like to get on and replace, but boy, the rain, just like the night, sets everything back for a couple days, but it, it, even with the rain, we're starting to slow down a little bit. We did get the guardrail installed on Woodland, and at the end of Firehouse down there, at that deep hole down there, that so somebody doesn't fall down in the railroad tracks there upside down. The gentleman that owns that property's on both sides there, Woodland at the other side, was very happy that we took the initiative to go in there and put guardrail in there. I've seen township snowplow trucks in there over the years, and et cetera. It was time to spend the money and do something with it. And next year, if all goes well, increase the budget money, because there's other places in the township that definitely needs guardrail for safety sake, a little bit more than what we got in this year. Tended the PennDOT meeting today in regards to the sloping of the mountain. Lot of questions about that, everybody seems to know it's going to happen. There's an awful lot of work to be done on that down there. I will tell you, at the present time, their plans are, that was right up front, they're going to shut down eleven and fifteen, both lanes. And of course, up comes the conversation, looking for help and looking for assistance from PennDOT. So, I plead our case, that if they shut this down, and they get a wreck on the other side, where do you send your traffic all the way around? They were receptive to the idea. I think it was a fruitful meeting, I think it will bear fruit, that they're going to keep at least one lane open with this down here. This is not a blasting operation down here, this is men working off of ropes and rappels that'll be going up in the mountain and dislodging all the loose rock, all the loose rock. No blasting, no changing the contour of it. And then, the, the program is they will be putting wire mesh up there, and anchoring up to the tight, so when the rocks come loose, they'll fall down behind the rock mesh and get behind the traps at the mountain, so that it can't come out on the road. There was other concerns there from other municipalities. I will be following that real close. They heard our concerns, the superintendent from PennDOT evidently must have got his tension, because at the end, he come back to me, and I promised him that I wouldn't go hard on him tonight to meet him. So, I do think that that will be worked out, that they're at least going to try to keep that open down there on the, but there's an awful lot of work to be done, decide first responders by where to who. And Greg's probably aware of what I'm talking about. Those are issues are yet to be ironed out. They will be ironed out, it will, the job will get done, and I think it'll be done in a satisfactory manner. They got an awful lot of traffic to contend with, and they're aware of that. That's, that's all I have, and they will be contractor, hasn't been selected yet, the bids won't go out to February, won't be selected till April, and the contractor must have an EMS emergency manager, management, manager on-site all the time, to be available with the contractor down here for opening the roads, should they be momentarily closed or whatever. They know they're doing a project, but there's a lot, a lot they haven't done anything with. So, we'll, we will follow up and go to the next meeting, and I'll report to you. That's all I have, underneath the Highway Department.
A question, Helen, you want to take care of the ads built, accepting it or not?
Pardon?
For the traffic light ads built? You want to do that now or later?
Yes, the ads built's on that. What is the wish of the board, accepting? And we've heard Max's, we may as well clear that up, Helen, we, you've heard Max's report up there. Brian, are you satisfied? Have you been involved with that up there?
I move we accept the ads built.
Okay. Motion been made to accept the ads built, so here a second.
I second.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent of staying on. I have it, so order. Okay. Penn Township Planning Commission.
Hats has given draft projections for their, I can't even read this. What is this for? From the Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, they would use these estimates for general planning purposes. The Planning Commission had no problem with their projections, they're going up to 2040 on them. So, they're just asking if we have any comments, or anything we wish to tell them, at Tri-County.
Okay.
Yes, no, maybe?
No, I'm waiting for the answer.
Do we motion accept it?
Yeah.
I move we accept the projections.
Okay. Motion been made, I'll second. All those in favor give their consent of staying on. I have it, so order. Zoning report on.
You have it in front of you. Anything else?
No, nothing else. No comments on it. Sure, you enforcement officer report.
He just did one permit for a new home coming in.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Penn Township Park and Rec were reporting for you.
You have my report, I just have two quick things. Three of us did take the food safety preparation course, we did pass the course, we're just waiting our, for our certificates to come in the mail, to continue with our senior luncheon, so it's right out. And also, we had a board member, Karen Schultz, resign due to personal family matters. So, we do have a position up low.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Karen.
Can I ask you a question, Karen? On National Night Out, which is the first Tuesday in August, I know the police department participates in National Night Out, does the Park and Rec do anything after National Night Out?
We have, in previous years, we did not, last year due to understaffing, and it was brought up at our past meeting, and it'll be, it's going to be re-discussed here at our next meeting.
Okay.
What we're going to do, and if we'll have a person all over there.
Thank you.
Penn Township Municipal Authority, anything to report?
Yes. Let's see here. Last Board of Supervisors meeting, we had discussed the connection date for the Morrison property to the King Cora sewer plant. The letter was received to the Municipal Authority, and a copy was forwarded to the secretary, to the office, which was forwarded to Rich, correct, right? As of right now, everything is on target for June 30th, bar anything that may come up with inspections that are yet to do. I spoke with Sam this evening, and he said he doesn't see any problems at this point here. He's just waiting for the inspections to be completed, and for hook up, and then testing for pressurization and things like that. Let's see here, the lanes on the Test property, I'll go ahead and pretty much scratch that. The Municipal Authority would ask if we decided at that point to ask them to drop the lanes, they would like a letter from the township. But at this point here, we've already made a decision on that, maybe if they don't follow through with the agreement, we may have to pursue, but the Municipal Authority would ask that if we did consider wanting them to drop the lanes on the property, that they would request a letter from the Board of Supervisors. That seems to be a dead issue at this point. Septic tank on the Test property, again, was issued, was talked about, referencing to that, for some reason or another, it was missed when the sewer came through, meaning that the tank was never pumped and was never filled. The Municipal Authority said that there could be, there could be potential other properties that are in the same situation in, in that process, that they could have been missed, where the tanks were not flushed, or pumped, and the tanks were not. CC member-at-large, Novinger, CC Novinger member-at-large stated that there's been complaints about odors in that area, this very well could be one of the culprits or one of the problems. At that point there, I don't think any decision was made by the Municipal Authority about going through the Park and Rec area and checking on the possible tanks that were not. The survey that was done to obtain grants, Municipal Authority said everything went well. Members of the Municipal Authority went out door-to-door to obtain those surveys with a list that was provided to them, with names and addresses. So, we expect, expect a positive re- result as that survey obtaining the grant money. And that's all I have.
Mentioned there the hook up to Morrison, Helen, I know there was an awful lot of permits come in, it was required, and stated by Slistre Ryder last night, is what that last month, is what the requirements were because of no movement action. And those permits, I understand, were picked up?
The applications were picked up, they were brought back in. The zoning permit has come, been approved by Lanny for the barn, has come back in, has not been issued to Mr. Morrison yet.
Okay.
Because I normally wait for all the permits. The building permits, according to Mr. Hollenball today, will be back to me in the next couple days.
Okay. And just following up on-
I understand.
-the days that they were given.
Yes.
Okay, and then, I mean, I've had, been questioned thoroughly about that, that's why I bring it up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so they're, they're on target with that, or no?
They're in the process of being approved, I guess, from Mr. Hollenball. I'm waiting on the building permits from Mr. Hollenball for both the barn and the mechanical.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about the occupancy?
Ma'am?
Highway occupancy?
In regards to which one, Helen?
As, as part of the cease and desist order, him putting his commercial property, vehicles on, off of Quail Trail, the letter we received from Mr. Morrison.
Yeah, he stated that's used for agriculture purposes only.
Yes.
Okay. And Rich coming off of a township road, I mean, replaces all over the township, if he used that strictly for agriculture, taking the tractor in there, is there a required occupancy permit off of our road there?
Highway occupancy?
Yes, highway.
What's the ordinance say? I'll have to look at the ordinance. What's the ordinance say about a highway occupancy permit?
Well, I'll have to look at-
Does it, does it address those particular issues on the agricultural side?
I don't know that answer.
Yeah. Well, if it's commercial, or if he wants to drive vehicles and stuff back in there, yes, I know, that's covered.
Yeah, that part is covered.
And the question is, he stated he's not going to use it.
Well, he's not using it for commercial purposes, but you still are, but, correct me if I'm wrong, Max, you still may need a highway occupancy permit-
To come off-
-to come off a township road, even for residential purposes.
You mean agricultural purpose?
No, I mean, in that case, yes, but my, my question is, because you don't use a highway access off of, off of the township road exclusively for commercial reasons, you may need it for residential reasons or other reasons.
You need it for residential-
That's my point. I need to see the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Jim, it's a question that's been brewing.
Well, it's, he says here, I'm not going to use it for commercial purposes. Well, that may be true, but that does not necessarily relieve the obligation of getting highway occupancy permit, but the ordinance says.
Okay.
I have a question, if he gets the, applies for a highway occupancy permit, can that be limited to only agriculture then, or are you, are you brought up residential? Or, once he gets the permit, is he allowed to then bring commercial traffic through there? I'm just wondering what-
Well, there's certain requirements that have to be met, and one of the things the engineer have to take a look at, to make sure there's the appropriate site distance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
It's off the dead end of Quail Trail, right? Yeah. The dead end.
Certainly, but I guess my question is, if he gets a highway occupancy permit, then is he allowed to use it for commercial purposes?
I'd have to see the way, the way it's set up.
And does he have plans to apply for highway occupancy?
We, I think we sent him a letter saying, you don't have a permit, and he wrote back and said, well, I'm not going to use it for commercial purposes, I don't think I need
But right now, to our knowledge, he's only using it for agriculture, which he leases the land out, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to move on, Helen. Secretary's report, HVAC contractor.
Okay, yes, you have those numbers with you. Henry and I called the companies and asked them for their outside of the maintenance contract fees. We got them all back, except for B&amp;W, you have them.
So, proposals come in, the bids were awful tight, awful close.
Yes.
New contractor come in from the Hammersburg area.
Yes.
Immediately, I asked Helen, we don't have their hourly rates or travel rates, or going for equipment prices or whatnot. Place those calls, get them out there. One gentleman did call me back and said he'd fax them in, which he did. I think we need to give the other one the opportunity to do that, and I make a motion and says it's not critical, but we tabled, let the supervisors review the information there, because the rates are a lot higher on the guy that's low in the contract.
Yes.
A lot.
Yes.
So, that's, that was my concern as to, you may take the one that's so competitive, I mean, they're really close, not much difference in the spread, and, but the first trip that you got, you lost that-
Yes.
-small dollar amount in the bid.
Okay, second to motion.
Okay, motion made with a second, all those in favor give their consent of staying on. Let's get the information, bring it back next month for the suit.
Okay.
CPA requests for proposals before you.
Okay, you have the four firms that supplied, you have a one-year contract, or the alternate was the three-years contract.
Mm-hmm.
They're close.
Okay, one more time, and that is also something that doesn't need to be decided tonight, it comes before the board, probably the first that anybody's had a little bit of time to take a look at it, and in fairness to the other board members and whatnot, we've discussed it, looked at it. it. Make a motion to table, review it, go back for next month for a decision on the audit proposal.
I second the motion.
Okay, motion is second, all those in favor give the consent of saying aye. I just have it, so we're demolition bid, Helen? Looks like that one was the way.
That was Mrs. Passchecks.
Okay, and the MS4 advertisement.
Okay, this is the advertisement that Ann Simonetti came into the office and talked to Henry and I about. If we have to have a permit, we have to do public awareness and outreach. Ann Simonetti is with the Capital Region Council of Governments and asked us if we'd consider doing a quarter-page add-in the Patriot. The cost to us would be $60. I'm asking if you wish to continue with this.
Where are we at with the MS4, Max?
D, he hasn't made, taken any actions.
Haven't given us any actions, huh?
No, they're, they're behind.
Okay. So we're actually not, we're not bound by them on anything yet?
You're not bound by anything. Do you get a permit?
Okay, and so we don't have.
You have one year after you get the permit to comply.
And so therefore, I would make a motion that we, we withdraw that offer to us and not be part of it until we have to give a permit.
I second that.
Okay, motion made with the second. All those in favor give the consent of saying aye. I just have it, so we're.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, Helen?
None other secretary's report.
Okay, engineer report.
Max should have a copy of my report, we have already covered that.
Okay, thank you, please report.
You have a copy of my report? We had a request for a permit for a handicap zone on Valley Street. I took a look at that, it's definitely not feasible, I believe it's feasible, it's on the side of the street, there isn't any parking, actually. They were also requesting possibly a parking space in the, in the VFW parking lot, and I advised them that that would be something they need to talk to the VFW about, obviously not us. But where they wanted it on the street, it's definitely not feasible. And I explained that to them.
Is there any adjoining handicap within that, that street, within?
There is, but all the parking's on the other side of the street.
On the other side.
If we would put one on the other side, it would be in front of someone else's house too. They ask, also ask about parking on their own property, which isn't a problem, but not to go onto the property from the VFW. Obviously, if they parked in there and somebody parked in a parking space at the VFW, they'd be blocked, so they'd have to come off the, behind the tums there, onto their property if they wanted to, which is, which is fine if they parked on their own property. Long as there are no sewer lines or anything like that, then we'd have to check.
Is there, and just for my education here, for people that have residences, is there a designated spot in each, in front of each person's home saying that they're up, they're, they have right to at least one parking spot in front of their home? Is there?
Not to my knowledge.
No, but that's normally the way people would do it.
Go to straight parking, but usually neighborly.
They, yeah, they, they respect, respect each other, and if you can park in front of your house, that's, that's good. If you have company over, they, usually the, the street has an overflow somewhere where they can, they can park. We're also starting a grant again in July, so we'll have, it'll be running in July, depending.
Yeah, we need a vote on that, whether you're gonna deny the application. Those wish of yours.
Based on the information provided by Chief Pickles, I make the motion that we agree and deny this permit for handicap parking.
Okay. Motion made? I'll second. All those in favor give the consent of saying aye. I just have it, so we're.
We had interviews, we interviewed three potential officer candidates. The backgrounds were completed on one of the candidates, Dory Thompson. I'd like to ask the board to vote, decide whether it's okay for, for her to be hired.
After the interviews that we had, I'll make a motion that we move forward and hire Dory Thompson, that's her name, right?
Yes.
I second the motion.
Motion made with the second. All those in favor give the consent of saying aye. I just have it, so we're.
And we do have potential of officers leaving and taking other persons elsewhere. That's why we're being proactive in obtaining new applicants and new ones.
That's correct, that's correct. Yeah, we have several, well, actually, all our officers are on a list on the other jurisdictions. Two of our, two of our officers are like probably within weeks of being given an offer, whether they take it or not. But, yeah, so we need to, we need to get people on board to, and get them trained up so we can replace anybody that, that does leave.
Thank you, sir.
Slistre's report, Rich?
Well, in answer to the, to this highway occupancy permit, I've done it, and I emphasize the word cursory review, this appears to be some 40 pages. But what jumps up at me is, in 2008, this board adopted an amendment that provides, and I'll paraphrase, "No driveway shall be constructed or connected with, with a dedicated public right-of-way without first having obtained a permit from the township." A permit may not be required for general maintenance of an existing improvement. I don't see any other exception for commercial use or whatever. It's, you can't have a driveway connect with the township right-of-way unless you permit. Now, as I said, it's cursory, I've been going through the balance of this, but that was an amendment made in 2008. And I see this letter says, "We're gonna use it for commercial purposes, we don't need an HOP." I haven't found that as an exception yet. If, if somebody knows otherwise.
I don't know the actual words, I believe.
Okay, because there are some, there are some provisions in these regulations that call upon the township engineer to undertake certain reviews and make certain determinations about the issuance of, of those. Do I hear bells? It stopped raining. Would you say no? Thanks. There's certain requirements in here that the engineer or enforcement officer looks at, and certain requirements that'll be made, so I would invite those people who have those responsibilities to take a look at this and determine for themselves, but I don't see an exception to the rule. Thank you. Other than that, we had the opportunity to look at some of the applications to which Chief Pickles just recently referred, and the, the report that I came up with concerning the one you hired was, was glowing from some, some people that know her. Some of the other candidates, some of the background checks are not yet back. There was a question last month of the status of the Ward matter. I immediately grabbed the file for the Warden matter, thoroughly looked at it, can talk to you about that subdivision that was approved, and realized tonight when I got here that I looked at the file that had "EN" at the end of it, that I didn't need to. I fall on the sword, my fault, you'll have a report next meeting, or before that. For some reason, I had Warden, Warden on my mind, not Ward.
Okay. Does anybody else, Slistre Reiger, has another engagement here? Like to get out of here? Maybe Max's or anybody else has anything to be brought up that may pertain to any questions or answers from Slistre Reiger?
Yes, we do.
Pardon?
We do.
You do?
You know, it'll, it'll come into effect here concerning findings that we have generated from a letter that was sent to all the supervisors earlier. I made a mail to you guys on June 13th concerning that, and I didn't get a response back from a lot of you about that letter. One party did get ahold of me on the board, so, I mean, I have, I have some things to present to the board that he may want to respond to, and I.
I haven't seen the letter, am I allowed to see the letter?
Absolutely, I think that that should go in executive session though, because of the nature of the letter.
I understand, I won't, may I read it without commenting on it publicly?
Did anybody bring any of their letters with them? I have mine with me in my office.
I haven't seen it, so I, I'm. And I won't comment on it, because you wanna do this privately, but I.
Okay, that's, that's part of, part of what I want to discuss in the background.
Well, I do believe that the letter that was personally written to the supervisors somewhat pertains to the memorandum that was put up by Helen. I would think that would be more pertinent than the personal letter to the supervisors, but if you would like to weigh in and read it, that's, that's your, your choice, Slistre. Yeah, I got a little here, some. I got a file off, you know. I'm okay with that.
I'll give it back to you, thank you very much.
Okay. So you have nothing else to present before he leaves?
Just the option that the township could have a, a strong, well, not a strong case, but a potential case for an appeal on the Morrison situation. And it was presented to me from legal advice that I received, that there is a possibility of that. Would you like me to show those documents now, or should we start?
No, I, I think I know what you're talking about, because I, as I told you earlier, I had a long conversation with your attorney, either yesterday or today, about it, and I understand his thought process, and I believe he understands my thought process.
Correct. Do you need, feel that you need to be here for that whole of, of the meeting minutes coming out?
No, I, I, I've handled where we're at, yeah.
So you can handle it from here, so that wouldn't hinder you? That's what my concern was.
No, no, I understand.
That's what you will be.
No, I understand exactly where everybody is, I understand exactly the issues, and I had a long conversation with your attorney, and we both looked at the various options that were available, and Ian indicated to me he was gonna meet with you folks, lay those options out, so you could make the informed decision, I'm aware of it.
And we'll be able to do that at a future date.
Yeah, and if, and again, I'll talk.
I don't wanna hold you up, but I did know you.
And I'll be happy to talk the jacket at any point in time.
Very good.
And he talked to me, as I said, he called me, I think it was, tell you it's Wednesday, I think it was yesterday.
Maybe before yesterday.
I think it was yesterday, I talked to him, and we had a long discussion about where we're at, the process, and he, he brought, I think, up to speed as exactly where everybody's at.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Richard?
Good for us.
Good evening, Max. Thank you. Kermit report, Helen?
Oh, you have it? Nothing unusual.
Correspondent, Cedar Cog email.
Uh, yes. Cedar Cog is offering a community-wide.
Richard? Mr. Reiger? One, one question, I'm a little bit leery at not knowing what's coming at us, would it be permissible, since it's just three supervisors, if they agree, would it be permissible to have Chief Pickle sit through that part of that, of that executive session?
You can, you are permitted to invite into an executive session any person or persons who has information or relevant information concerning the issue that you're discussing at the executive session, provided the issue falls under the category of contract, legal status of certain things, personnel, so in the context of that, yes.
Okay, and since there's, I don't know, in-depth, your attorney's being talked about, that scares the heck out of me.
It does me too.
I guess what I'm getting at is, there's three supervisors sitting here, going into executive session where there's no minutes, where there's no records, and I just wanna not know what's coming at me.
Well, the, the.
Looking for that third person with ears.
Well, the, two things, caution, as I said before, if something comes up during, you can always adjourn and say, "We think this is more public." Second of all, you're not required to make any decisions during executive session.
Correct, I understand that.
It is an information gathering and imparting. And if you're gonna make any decisions as a result of that, then you must come back out in the public and announce, and the vote, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So for example, if you went into executive session, you were sued by XYZ Company, and the discussion was, "Should we pay them $5,000 to settle the case or not?" And you went in, you talked about, talked about, and decided, "We're gonna pay $5,000 to settle the case." Then you would come back out in public and announce, "We've motioned to pay $5,000 to settle the legal case." That's an example, we're not getting sued for $5,000 by XYZ Company, by the way.
Good enough, Rich, thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Correspondent, Cedar Cog email.
Yes, Cedar Cog is offering a breakfast concerning community-wide energy independence. It's for your information.
Dr. Madden letter, Helen, regards to the permit?
Yeah, this.
Out here in Wheatfield?
Yes.
Okay. He had already contacted me about that project, that comes from Wheatfield side in the Penn Township. I was out, reviewed the area, saw nothing drastic that would affect us out there or impact any Penn Township resident.
Okay, so fill out the information that's in the bag?
Fill out the information I would recommend. It's just a matter of where they're terminating a pipe that they're putting in on the township side of the road, yes. I'll make a motion, we fill out the information and pass it on. Do I hear a second?
I second the motion.
Motion made with the second, all those in favor give the consent of saying aye. I just have it, so we're.
The last thing is a Perry County Commissioners are gonna be updating the Perry County Municipal Solid Waste Management Plan. They tell the purpose of it, and I did get the project overview and put it on the back page for your information. If you wish, they're holding meetings on July 14th at 1:00 PM at the Veterans Building. I'm sure they're gonna come at, at a future time and ask us to also adopt that like we did in the past.
Okay.
Basically, the same thing we've done tonight.
Okay, old business?
I don't.
One question, Helen, wasn't able to make it the other day, was there any comments offered by the Workforce Committee, came and reviewed our, our program, or out in the shed or anything when we weren't here?
No, she actually couldn't go out to the shed, she was in a hurry.
Okay.
The only comment is, "There's still a ripple in the rug in the office."
Okay.
That she'd like to replace it. It's a good rug still. The rug's still good.
Okay, okay, so she was, she was okay with everything?
She was okay with everything else. She, you talked to her?
She met with the Police Department.
Yeah, met with you guys?
Mm-hmm. Oh, I do have some more workshop safety lessons to bring off for you.
Okay, that being done, new business, moldy hazard mitigation plan is forced for adoption. What is the wish of the board?
I move the adoption of the plan.
Okay, motion been made for adoption of the plan?
I second.
Motion made with the second, all those in favor give the consent of saying aye. I just have it, so we're. Insurance, medical, Helen?
It's coming that time again. Our start date is September 1st, so I have to get with Haldeman, not Haldeman, our insurance broker who goes out and gets the quotes for us. And start that. We may have to fill out the survey, health survey beforehand. We, we may not, I don't know it yet. And at that time, we'll have to make some type of executive session, I guess, for you guys to meet with them, and they can explain the different. Yep, the different plans, the different, and this will cover the medical vision and dental. That's it.
Okay, one other thing underneath new business. In the past, there's, come to a head with me at the present time, and almost recently, it's out there in the streets, you know, that this Board of Supervisors, or me in particular, I'm the cause that we don't have the fitness center up in the Business Campus. I'm the cause that we don't have an Applebee's down next to Sheetz. I'm the cause that we don't have an Applebee's down next to Sheetz. All these things come out, that Henry and this township has things set down, and we shut it down, that they can't develop, that they can't grow, they don't have anything, it's, we're all wrong. And it seems to be that I'm in the limelight in regards to that. But, you know, just like we said here with the Ag Security Hearing, and a lot of people misunderstood, we posted those signs, formality of adoption after a seven-year plan. And I understand how it gets misinterpreted, because I will use Mr. Peters after the meeting was over, said, "Brian, do you understand what this is all about?" And his answer was to me, "Yes, this is all land that's preserved, it can't be built upon or used for something else." So even Brian misunderstood what that was all about, and I explained to him absolutely incorrect. Did I not, Brian?
That's correct.
And so, you have those rumors that get out there for character assassination. They love to crucify people for anything, and I'm not quite ready to be hung on a cross yet. But that being said, I've attended an awful lot of economic committees, bar y'all, meetings with the township, the county, and et cetera. And I've heard here in the past, you know, with the planning commission and whatnot, "Do you have an economic development plan about bringing businesses into the township?" I've sat and listened to the geography in Penn Township, where there one access down here, what we have to get people in and out of here, what for lands available and everything else. And we're not very unique or compatible to extreme growth in Penn Township. I wish we had an intersection like it's up here at Newport, where the Wheat Market went in, and McDonald's went in, and everything else is flocking in there with a large area, rural area to pull from, from people coming from Thompson Town, Millers Town, as far away as Dickusburg, Newport, moving in there. We don't have that access.
May I just say one thing about the Ag part? As we push farms out of Penn Township, farmers spend money locally here. They spend a lot of money, and there are statistics to uphold that, that they would spend more here and pay and help growth here higher than any other commercial operation coming in here. So I will work on that and bring that to the board at some point so that you have those statistics in hand.
Well, I haven't finished yet.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, in lieu of everybody saying that this township is unfriendly, I would like to come back next month with some items of interest that I have. I would like to see a board generated to come out here and tell us why we don't have economic development. I would like a board to tell me why we haven't filled the business campus up here. I'm tired of hearing Penn Township's the one that keep us out over here. There isn't a building up there that we didn't over backwards, bar y'all, to change what's in our zoning and whatnot to allow people in there, including a truck stop up there or a place to transfer trucks up there. We'd done our best that we could to get them in there. Sorry the gentleman didn't come, and now I get nailed, "Why all these conditional uses that are permitted uses?" I'm going to use that one as an example and take this time to give it to you. You were going to allow a guy that comes in there and has a small amount of trucks to make his repairs, transfer a place and whatnot, and he has nice equipment. Know the individual, wouldn't be a big impact. But so he comes in, and he got a conditional use, and it was granted to him. Another trucking company wants to come in here, they want to put 50 tractor trailers back in there, and you left this guy do that. And behind that, another trucking firm. Now we got 100 trucks coming in. That's where the responsibility falls upon the supervisors on a conditional use that it would not be good for that business campus or conducive to do that. So the conditional use that was granted to these people up here has to be taken a look at in depth, and I had no problem with what happened to Mr. Ward or anybody else up there. Sure, I'd love to see an Applebee's or McDonald's or something around here, or in there, or there, or whatever, but it's not this board that's holding it up, and hasn't been. No, it hasn't been us. It is open out there, there is nothing out there that if someone wants to do with their land yet, that they can still do it, you know, as long as they follow certain guidelines in the township. There is a reason for the zoning. Many people like it, many people don't. But I made the statement the night it was adopted, and I posed an awful lot of things in it, including how they have my own place zone. And I said it, the stroke of a pen, there'll be a lot of people unhappy when it comes to dealing with some of these things later down the road. And it comes to pass that that is exactly right, but I still feel we're better off with our zoning by far than we are without it. If you, so that statement being made, I would like to bring back, I would like to give you a list of things that I would like a committee to take a look at. I've heard about all this economic development and et cetera in the past, and it seemed to become a dead issue and fell on dead ears, and I surely look for something before the board before now. I'm willing to institute that, to get that monkey off my back that's not this board of supervisors or this supervisor in particular that's holding that up. I will be come back next month with it. Know if somebody wants to serve on a good, interesting committee that's going to come back and show us the benefits, show us the rewards from it, show us the increase in funds, revenue coming back into this township, man, I'm more than willing to listen. More than willing to listen. I wanted to put that out there because that is a concern of mine. I'm not going to sit here, bar y'all, and let this board or other people get blamed for things that, as long as I can do something about it, or say what I have my mind regards to it. I'll be back next month with that. That's all I have to say about that, and that was underneath new business. At this time, if there's nothing else before the board, Helen?
Yeah, I just have one thing here.
Yes.
I just want to inform the board that I will be out of town from July 5th to July 15th, but I will be available via email and phone if anything arises. I will be, you will be contacted.
Okay. This time, I'll make a motion that we dismiss the meeting, Helen, at 20:09, and enter into executive session.
I second.
Second, let's go first with that.